Six thirty.
Good evening. I am calling the Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty Planning Commission Meeting to order. It is six thirty P M. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually via Zoom webinar conference call due to the state of local emergency for the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commission members and staff will participate in this meeting via telephone and video conference. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting by joining in via online Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on B C T V and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to H T T P S colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash join and typing in webinar I D nine four one two four six three three two two seven. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which items you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine and enter meeting I D nine four one two four six three three two two seven. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when callers may speak to that item and will give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until that time. Please note there may be a slight delay due to the difference in technology. Speaking by phone, please mute your computer since there may be feedback. Now on to the agenda. The first item of our agenda tonight is to adopt the agenda. Do any members of the planning commission have any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Staff, do you have any changes to the agenda? Okay.
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Madden. With no changes, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Commissioner Henderson, thank you for joining us.
I move to accept the minutes.
Wonderful.
The agenda, sorry, sorry.
And Commissioner Roberts.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna do roll call voting tonight rather, so Ms. Madden, if you would, do a roll call vote here.
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries, and the next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was November twenty third, two thousand and twenty. And I guess, planning commissioners, do you have any changes to the meeting minutes that you would like to know? Okay, seeing none. Staff, I know you've commented on some changes that you'd like to identify. Go ahead, Ms. Madden.
Yes, there are some changes to the printed minutes from staff that were sent in advance to commission members, so they're related to an incorrect meeting date noted in the minutes approval section from the previous, previous meeting, as well as a formatting change in the updates and adjournments sections. So staff would recommend approval with those changes as noted in the word document that was emailed to the commission earlier this afternoon.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Madden. So with those changes, we would need a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty third meeting with the changes identified by the planning commission. Here by the city planners. Commissioner Roberts.
I move that we approve the minutes from the November twenty third meeting based on the changes made by staff. With the changes made by staff.
Thank you. And Commissioner Awad.
I second the motion.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Awad. All those in favor, we will go to a roll call, and please say aye at that time.
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye. And the motion carries. All right, so on to our first meat and potato agenda item. We have a continued public hearing on the application of the City of Burnsville for zoning ordinance amendment to Title ten zoning, Chapter thirty, signs related to new provisions created to regulate temporary decal installations. Ms. Madden, our city planner will be providing presentation on the item and going over some of the information provided in our background. So, Ms. Madden, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. And so this item is related to a two thousand and twenty work plan item called building expression, which we talked about at the August tenth Planning Commission meeting as a discussion-based item. And at that point, we were just bringing it forward to go over some of what staff had learned through research with market, market cities and looking into the topic as a whole. So to recap on the topic of building expression, because as you'll know, the name of the item this evening does not include that phrasing. Is that the term building expression is a marketing tool that was brought forward to the city related to some type of temporary signage installation. And it kind of played off the term architectural expression in that it's utilizing that combination of those signage and building details to express the character of the business or of the property on the facade of a building. So this was a brand-new concept to the city, and the ordinance that we have prepared this evening is will be new for implementation and in our department and new for a lot of communities in Minnesota who I conducted some of that market research, research for as far as an official sign type that is defined in an ordinance rather than just permitted as signs in general are permitted. And so this could have affected the sign ordinance or building materials and specifications. But the direction at that August meeting was for them from the planning commission was to move forward with sign changes related to temporary signage installations and kind of outlining a permit process. So that's what we're bringing forward tonight. Next slide, please. And so seen here is kind of the new definition that we created and referring to this project as a temporary decal installation. So as you may remember from the August meeting, when we talked about these types of signage installations, we were looking at facade wraps as a temporary sign type, as, as we discussed at that meeting, utilizing building materials, since the City of Burnsville and our city code doesn't regulate color or patterning, that that wasn't necessarily something that we would need to change our ordinance in order to allow. As you may remember from earlier this year, the new Fire Station One building utilizes some building materials that are in architecturally integrated into the plan that kind of showcased that expression. This is the Fire Station, Fire Station One, based on the materials that illustrate a number one on the side of the building. So what's brought before you tonight is for kind of the second piece of that building expression, which was brought up to staff originally in that marketing discussion, which was a adhesive type of material that would be put on a facade, a decal, which I think that a lot of people really see those on the interior walls, but this would be new in that this is something on an exterior wall and thus would be subject to the sign ordinance. So the definition was created, taking and borrowing from different parts of the sign ordinance in that it would be displayed for a limited duration. It would be a temporary sign type, and it would be subject to a small section of special provisions within the sign ordinance. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, it is kind of a smaller ordinance or smaller section within the sign ordinance. We are calling it a temporary decal installation, and it's allowed in all commercial in industrial districts as well as commercial uses and mixed use or T O D and conditional uses in our districts. So what we've done is noted that based on the wall type or the composition of the wall that these installation would be allowed on permitted major exterior materials as referenced in our ordinance. But that proof of manufacturer specifications should be supplied prior to issuance of the signed permit. So the signed permit will be reviewed by both a planning or economic development staff member as well as the building inspections department, as there are some rules based on building and fire codes because of this type of material that might affect the building and planability, things like that. So there will be a plans reviewer from that expertise level that looks at this type of a fine permanent application. We've also provided some standards that they must be placed in accordance with the ordinance, but that they do not apply towards the maximum allowable sign area as temporary signs already under the ordinance do not apply towards that amount of area that would be a permanent sign. So the installation is not intended to be used in place of permanent signage, but rather a temporary duration of up to three years for the permit. Three years was chosen based on some lifetime descriptions and different products that were found through a couple of different vendors. So typically, they would be rated anywhere between three and five years, lasting longer depending on the elements. And in a state like Minnesota, based on the elements, we went with the three-year timeframe, and that would be more recommended. So we are allowing one permit per street drainage per property. And then in the case of multiple buildings on one lot, then that standard would apply to the separate structures. So because it is not intended to be used as permanent signage, it isn't the intent of this type of a building wrap or a wall decal is not for each individual tenant base to have a wrap, but rather for it to be the building as a whole. And then when it's used to wrap the facade of a structure that window signage allowance referenced early in the code shall not apply. There is a thirty-five percent window coverage requirement for window signs, which could be a sticky sign, but also could be lit signs placed in the window. It could be a variety of sign types, and those are allowed without a permit. So these are a specific type of sign which does require a permit and is not subject to that thirty-five percent standard. Next slide, please. So for the permitting process that was requested, this is still being developed in an actual form and will need to be coordinated into our online permitting systems that we use for reviewing and routing plans. But the applications that are initiated by property owners will be sent in general to the planning department. They'll need to include elevation drawings or an illustration indicating materials of the exterior wall in the proposal, the design layout of the proposal, material of the, what's being installed, not just of the wall that it's going on, and then a listed duration of the temporary decal installation. And as mentioned before, it would be reviewed by someone from planning and economic development as well as someone from building inspections to go over some of those building and fire code requirements based on these types of materials. Next slide, please. Alter my headphones off. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommended to the city council approval of the ordinance as drafted. As Chair Timmerman mentioned earlier, this is a continued public hearing from the November twenty third meeting. So that will need to be, be brought forward, and then I am available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Okay, so I think I will just reopen the public hearing now. And then commissioners, we can kind of come back to Ms. Madden. So at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any members of the public on the Zoom meeting who wish to speak. If you do want to speak, the moderator can unmute you. It does not look like we have any questions from the public at this time. I will, I think what I will do is I will, I'll close the, the hearing, and if for some reason somebody does hop on here, I reserve the right to reopen the public hearing, but at this point, I'll, I'll close the public hearing. It was open at six forty-four, closed at six forty-four, and planning commissioners, I guess at this point, if you have any comments or questions for Ms. Madden or just in general, I'd be happy to hear them. Commissioner Awad.
Hi, I have a few questions. This does not, like stickers on glass that this does not apply. Is that correct? Like a
It does not apply to if someone were to have it existing or want to put up some new type of sticker on there or like window glass that may be existing or in the future. Those are currently already allowed under the sign ordinance, so long as the thirty-five percent of the window is the maximum that can be covered.
Okay, you also mentioned that this is meant to apply to the building as a whole, not to each tenant's space. So like a strip mall or a multi-tenant building, each basically has to be the building owner that would file the application rather than the individual tenants for their own spaces. I can't quite think of the space that that might apply to, but just asking the question about.
Yes, great question. That's correct. So that's not to say that an entire multi-tenant building facade couldn't be wrapped in this type of installation, but it would be something that would be building owner initiated, and it would be one installation. So I'm, it could be a group effort if that's something that people wanted or an applicant wanted to do, but the generally the intent is for an entire facade and not an individual tenant-based sign.
Okay, and I have one last question. Let's say I have a, you know, a freestanding store, you know, don't wanna chop or barbecue place or whatever, and I, I get the three-year permit and put up my building wrap, and it still looks great at the end of three years. Is there a process to extend beyond the three years or what hap? Or am I required to remove it and reinstall it and reapply, or what's, what happens after, after the three years?
So there would be a process to apply for another permit, and it would involve an inspection of the materials. So there are provisions in the code about wear and durability in general for sign types, so it would involve an additional three-year permit subject to an inspection.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, nice, nice work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Awad. Commissioner John.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think this is well put together. I was reading through it, and I, I really like how you put out the provisions, and it's all set up, and I think that I feel really comfortable with what we're doing. So I really feel like this was well, well-written so that we can control, you know, sun damage, things like that, so we don't look gaudy or old. That was probably my biggest concern with the wraps in, in general that things won't look very, look worn or old or used. I think I like how this is drafted, so I just wanted to make that mention. Good job on this.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Were there any other comments? I'd like to echo Commissioner John. I think after our preliminary discussion, everything that we talked about was, was captured and the concerns of weather, like you said, Ms. Madden, in Minnesota, that's definitely a factor in this. I think you captured all of that, so nice work. A well entertaining motion at this point. Commissioner Awad. Commissioner Awad, unmute, please. Thank you.
So I was rushing me to get my hand up.
Well.
So I will, I will move that we recommended the city council approval of the ordinance as drafted.
Moved by Commissioner Awad, and I have three hands, so I'll go to the next Commissioner Henderson.
I will second that.
Thank you. Moved by Awad, seconded by Henderson. If we could have a roll call vote, Ms. Madden.
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye. And the motion carries. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is a discussion on our two thousand and twenty-one work plan, which is to include city code updates to Title ten zoning as well as Title eleven subdivisions. And we are graced with Assistant Community Development Director Regina Dean this evening to run us through some of the items on our proposed work plan. Ms. Dean.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Next slide, please. So the planning commission is required to adopt a work plan every year as the other advisory commissions within the city. And the typical process that's followed is staff kind of throughout the year monitors the discussion that planning commission has. And throughout that year takes those notes and kind of keeps a running chart of things that, that, that they've heard. And then towards the end of the year, in December typically, staff brings forward those items and planning commission has a discussion, which you'll have tonight. And then those items are then moved forward to our city council and typically discussed at an all-day work session in the upcoming year in February, this will occur. Sometimes items are kind of elevated or added by the city council, and then those are then discussed again with the planning commission, and then eventually the planning commission adopts their work plan and presents that work plan to city council. Next slide, please. That's the typical process. Before I jump into two thousand and twenty-one, I do want to highlight all the great accomplishments that as a planning commission you did and our staff as well, really in partnership with the planning commission. So just looking at this slide, everything that's highlighted in yellow are all the accomplishments that you took care of that you addressed and put a lot of time and effort into really guiding the changes that were made. So some of these items will, they're not highlighted, but you're still working on them, and you still will be working on them as a commission for probably the next year, two years, five years with some of these items. For example, the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan update. As part of that, there will be ongoing implementation over the years until we do a new update. And, and then it'll continue. So that really just, it will continue to keep that on. You did make progress towards some of the implementation, but that will continue on and on. Building expression, tonight you recommended approval of the temporary decal ordinance or building expression ordinance. So that will be moving on, another checkmark for our commissioner staff, assuming that council approves that next week. And then a big one, the transit-oriented development ordinance. You were part of that development alongside with our Economic Development Commission, working with staff and our consultant on that approval, and that's underway in not only the city code language, but then also the rezoning, the actual land. So great accomplishment there. And then building perimeter landscaping and landscaping on open, large, open space lots. We ended up combining those two efforts, and that's something that was approved, provides a lot of flexibility to our property owners and really looked at kind of the reality of how some of our buildings are used and, and really again allows flexibility to projects with like large loading docks or large front doors, for example, for like our multi-retail components. And then solar, solar ordinance annual update. So this had been on planning commission work plan for, I think, since I started at Burnsville five years ago, and finally got to the point where it's like, yeah, I think we're, we're at a really nice point where the ordinance is working well, and, and we're just about as up-to-date as we can be at this point. Of course, with all of our sections of our city code, if there are there are new developments or new ways of doing things, that's something that can always be revisited. But we're at a point where it's like, okay, we've seen this, we've seen this enough, so that's checked off. County Road forty-two redevelopment vision, we'll just continue implementation of this as the center village area continues to evolve and, and eventually portions of it redevelop. Zoning ordinance updates as it relates for Minnesota River watershed district. So this, we haven't brought to you, so don't feel bad that you haven't tackled this one or highlighted this item. This, we, it's listed for fourth quarter, and we're still, from a staff standpoint, evaluating what changes we need to make to bring forward. So I do anticipate early next year that this will be something that you will be addressing. But again, don't feel bad that you haven't checked it off. It, it's coming, and we will work with you on this and educate you as well on, on what those changes may be and what some of the recommendations that you make, what implications of might have. And then the parking ordinance update, again, another really big accomplishment. Again, providing flexibility to our property owners and our developments, really bringing our current city code up to date. There were a lot of changes that were made that that really will have a positive impact, I think, to how we develop now. Certainly, as you've driven around, there's large parking fields that aren't being used, and some of the changes that you made will help to address, address that. And then farmers markets and temporary seasonal sales, that's something that was actually changed in summertime. And another way to be flexible with our property owners and people that want to do unique business within the City of Burnsville. So great job, staff and the planning commission. Next slide, please. So two thousand and twenty-one is gonna look a little different than two thousand and twenty as far as items that we envision the planning commission to be working on. So the city council has indicated that they would like to do a full city code update. And they will be discussing this at their all-day work session in February. Now, the full city code update addresses things like Title three business regulations or some building code provisions. And another title, it liquor licenses, animal type ordinances. And another title, liquor licenses, animal type ordinances licensing. So that it really goes across the spectrum. But then also integrated, obviously into the city code is Title X and Title XI, which as a planning commission, you're charged with, you oversee from a zoning and land use standpoint. So what we're proposing is that although this very large city code update will occur, which we think will take at least a year, we are proposing to pull out X and XI, the areas that you're charged with, and have a separate, perhaps a separate consultant, work with you through the year to make updates to those sections. So we are looking to really occupy a lot of your time with doing a full upgrade to these sections of the code. Now, there may be things that we may not even touch. For example, we just did the update with the transit-oriented development section and the parking section of the city code and building expression and farmers markets. But there may be other sections in the code where we like really, really want to change. And it'll be guided, the consultant will guide you through this process. And again, we think this process alone will also take probably a year. We think that we will dedicate one meeting, if possible, out of your, you have two meetings per month. So perhaps it's that first meeting in, of the month will be dedicated to city code update, city code review. And then it's possible, similar to when we did the comprehensive plan update, there were extra meetings that the commission attended. Of course, we will let you know well in advance if that should happen, but know that that could be a possibility. The full outline and the full plan is not completely scoped out yet. We do need to have a conversation with the city council and get their approval before we completely move forward. But these are some, some ideas that we've been discussing. We still want to bring forward some of these ongoing efforts that are, have been on your work plan. So those aren't going to fall off. But most of, I can envision, most of your work will be related to the city code update, Title XI and XI. And really what we're doing is looking at outdated language, verbiage. What are unique things that maybe other cities are doing, innovative things? How can we integrate that into our city code? We want to eliminate barriers. We also want to be flexible. One of the ideas that was recently thought of was we have a 30-foot setback requirement for our single-family homes. Since we're pretty much all built up in Burnsville, do we want to think about making that 25 feet or 20 feet? So that people can make some facade improvements to their home or bump out their living room to make it more modern to today's living style. So just, you know, a couple of ideas that not everybody's going to do it, but the ones that want to make those improvements to their home, that want to do a small expansion, won't have to go through the hurdle of applying for a variance or moving to another city because it just, it just won't work. So things like that. Certainly looking for your ideas if you've taken the time to look at city code and say, this has been bothering me or this, I just don't get, why do we do things this way? Like, let us know, let us know now so that we can start. As a staff, we've started kind of tabulating and putting together our list. We want to know your, your feedback and what's on your list as well. What are you hearing from your, your neighbors? What have you experienced yourself? So, and this will be a, a long process, but I think overall it'll be, it'll be a good thing. It'll provide that flexibility and ease for our residents and for staff as well.
Ms. Dean, I'm curious what the city council's direction has been on ordinances that have a fiscal impact.
From a positive standpoint, you know, I don't think there's been necessarily a specific directive at all, but I can see that, for example, the example I gave about, you know, someone wanting to put an addition on their home, that adds value to a home. And, you know, that's more property tax for the cities and others. You know, that could be seen as a positive thing. I don't think they've necessarily, from what I understand, have they had a lot of discussions specifically on this city code update? That's a really good question for the all-day work session as well.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I ask is because, I mean, when you open up all of the the ordinances in the city, and the one that, you know, I'm kind of thinking about is the way that we currently do assessments for road repairs in residential areas. And, you know, some cities will charge by the front edge, some will charge by, you know, the total acreage of the property. Others will include that in the, just the general property tax on that property. So I mean, that's one example, but there are going to be hundreds of examples of ordinances that will have a significant fiscal impact. And so it will be nice to have a little bit of direction, especially as it's related to planning and zoning on how creative we can get with some of these things.
Good feedback. Writing this down.
Okay. And then before you go on, Commissioner Wad, did you have a comment or a question or is that from? Okay. Ms. Dean, carry on.
And so next, next slide, please. So this is just a discussion item. We're certainly open to feedback from the commission to carry forward to the city council to continue to, you know, write down the lists that we have specific to the Title X and Title XI subdivision sections of the city code. We want to know, you know, if there's anything specific that you want us to either research, have issues or concerns, specific themes as we begin this work. Again, we anticipate that this will be a big bulk of your work other than the typical development review projects that come in for you. We're certainly open to any additional discussion you'd like to have or additional direction.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wad, I think that's a new hand, so we'll go to you.
It is. Thanks. I think this is great. And the example you mentioned about reducing the front yard setback as a way to open up people's, you know, development opportunities for people within their own single-family houses. I never thought that was possible. So it's going to take me a while to get my mind around what other things can, you know, could be maybe discussed, but I think that's, I think it's great that that, you know, this is on the table and something that can be looked at. Because as you mentioned, Burnsville is all built up. It was mostly built up a while back. So the housing stock is not as, you know, it's not super modern like it might be in the outer ring suburbs. And I think this is a great way to maybe revitalize or begin to open up possibilities for revitalizing our housing stocks. So, awesome.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know that this is slated for the all-day work session on February 5th, correct? Okay.
That's correct. I believe that is.
Okay, that being said, what's the deadline you would want some feedback?
Um, I would say ideally, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to give it. That day, yeah.
Yeah, no, I would say, let's say a month from today. So like January 14th, January 15th. I'm not sure if that falls on a Saturday or not, but, or Sunday. But let's say one month from today would be awesome.
Okay, that's a Thursday, so we're okay. Why, I just had to ask, because you know, we just got this information a few days ago, so to go through the entire process would take a little bit. So that gives us a month to go through things. That helps out. Thank you.
And think about, you know, things that you've acted on before as a commission. And maybe, you know, as a commission as a whole, you came to a consensus that, yeah, you know, I agree with this, but like deep down inside, you're like, uh, I don't know if I would have voted that way, you know? Things like that, that maybe you've come across that you can easily like jot down.
That's a great way to think about it, yes.
Thank you. And we can kind of move this maybe to updates, but I think we have a meeting on January 11th. And so maybe we can just logistically figure out a way to, to bring it back. So, you know, the planning commission can discuss it and have it ready to move on. But we can talk about that in a little while. Commissioner John?
I was just curious if, Ms. Dean, you're thinking that this will last throughout just this year? Is it going to continue on through the next year as going over the Title X, Title XI? Or it seems like a huge project, so that's why I ask.
Yeah, I do foresee it in all of 2021 and perhaps really into 2022. I think in one of my charts that I provided as an attachment, I had an error on those dates. I'm not quite, my brain's not quite thinking in, in 2021 terms. In 2022, I think this full year of 2020 is throwing me off, so.
Not alone.
But I do foresee it to be, yeah, full 2021, partial into 2022. And we'll see how it goes. It'll be consultant in partnership with city staff, lead. You know, we have, for example, Sarah went to a conference on city code updates and they said, you know, whatever your expectation is for doing a full city code update, like put a multiplier on that because it, you know, it'll probably stretch. So that's always possible too. We want to be as efficient as possible, but at the same time, we want to, you know, give this the time it needs as well.
So is the intention to roll out, you know, the entire city code rewrite at one time, you know, 12 or 18 months from now? Or is it to kind of approve these and have the city council pass them as they are, you know, approved by the appropriate commission or, you know, area?
That's a really good question. I don't have the answer for that. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Dean right now? All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. It'll be an undertaking for you guys, a significant undertaking for you guys. And it will be, it will be fun. It's something that probably has never been done in our city. And I think that with a little bit of optimism, we'll make it through. So thank you so much. All right. So that does conclude the items, as I said, the meat and potatoes on our agenda. So as far as updates, staff, do you have any updates?
Just a few small things. And so your next planning commission meeting will be on January, Monday, January 11th, 2021. We'll keep you posted on what items will be on that agenda at that time. As for the hearing, we held this evening on the building expression topic. So that will be on the January 5th, 2021, city council meeting on the consent agenda as well as an ordinance, which would amend the fee schedule for that type of permit application. And those are all that I have. Regina, do you have anything to add?
So just a heads up, one of the things that we do every year is provide a check for your use of technology and any printing that you do. So just be aware that you will be receiving a check from the city, a small little stipend or, again, your use of technology and printing. So be aware of that. That will be coming your way.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Commissioners, any updates? All right. See, none. We will move on to adjournment. And just to recap, so there is no planning commission meeting later in December. The next one is January 11th. And then for any of the items that we discussed tonight, that will move on to city council, which would have been for the the discussion on the signs that will move on to their next regular meeting, which I believe is January 5th. I see Ms. Madden nodding so good. I've got that right. Okay, so as a reminder, I'm guessing you're anticipating adjournment, so, oh, okay. As reminder, members, the public can submit additional public comment related to items on this evening's planning commission meeting agenda until 4:30 PM on Friday, December 18th, which is this Friday. And before we adjourn, I do just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And for those currently celebrating, Happy Hanukkah and a, a Happy New Year that brings health and a renewed optimism to everyone. And with that, I will take a motion for adjournment. And Commissioner Roberts?
Well, that'd be instead. I would like to also say, happy holidays to everybody. It's been a fun year, very different. Oh my gosh, this has been different. We're not going to be able to get together for our annual holiday meeting outside of here, but that's okay. I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. And festive football season this coming week as well. Okay, Commissioner John?
I will second that motion. Skull Vikings. Go ahead.
All right. And if we could have a roll call?
Commissioner Wad?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner John?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner?
Aye.
Oh, Commissioner Timmerman?
Aye. And thank you all so much. We are adjourned.